Oh, at least we can do it here. But I told that I'm lumbering in like some appetizers. A shrimp wringer or something.
That'd be overwhelming.
We're just.
Just don't put it in plastic.
No, we keep it long enough the camera doesn't see it.
You can put a cover over the top.
That's right.
It is.
Yes, this is meeting yet without this one.
It's a lot more fun with the sound off. With our sound off.
You're pretty on the mark.
Well, I don't know. I have a short attention span. So it's hard to stay on task. Why? My brother was director of student activities there. But you're talking about Elvis.
Yeah, yeah, Elvis Graceland.
I remember Graceland. No, he didn't do that, but he had a band. I'm sure he played some Elvis songs. He must have gone on vacation there.
Welcome to the November 3, 2025 regular city council meeting is now called to order. Would you all rise and say the prayers?
I pray to the Lord.
I pray to the Lord. Thank you, Curtis. Here, John Breckenridge.
Here.
John Feiger.
Yep.
Mark Park.
Yes.
All right, that takes us to our first public participation. It looks like we have Mr. Harhart.
Hello.
And I distributed a handout for his presentation as well.
Is it this?
Yes.
Hello, my name is Scott Harhart and I reside at I-2804 Norwoods, Hannibal, Missouri. And I'm here today to give you guys an update on where we're at with our project, our TIP project, AmeriComms TIP. Joined today with Laura Lashley, who's with D2, and she takes care of the numbers, financials, and the TIP-related nuances of the project. And on this presentation I got for you guys is the goals and objectives of the project is to develop a challenging piece of property. You guys have been out there seeing the quadrant between I-35 and Highway 36. There is a lot of undulations, a couple of waterways to navigate, and our design is to construct a ring road around that property in order to develop lots for commercial development. So we want to provide a quality business establishments at the doorstep of the city. We want to provide an environment for a sit-down restaurant, and we provide a nesting for a quality hotel. Our main, my main focus of business is hotels. Developing land is kind of a ball of spray or side issue to that. We are proven developers that can get the job done, and one thing I want to stress is that any of the issuance of TIP bonds are not city obligation bonds. There's totally the burden of the developer and that would be me. So on the third page there, you'll see the boundary of the TIP is that purple area there. And, you know, it shows kind of the waterways there that need to be navigated, and it doesn't really show its true picture of the elevation changes there, but there's pretty extreme elevation changes that need to be conquered. So the site issues are accessibility, and there's ingredient issues and utilities, whether it be stormwater, electric throughout the site there to the different pads. So this is kind of a conceptual site plan of what we have designed. So it comes with a mix of different retail businesses in this environment, but we feel like the visibility off of I-35 and the connectivity to that near the overpass, and we can bring in some quality businesses here to the community, and we feel like we can do a quality job of doing that. So the site layout there shows the listing of what we see that would be in this development. So a convenience store, and one thing Patrick pointed out is, you know, it's not two restaurants, really, it's a lot, two would be a restaurant about the size of a 12,000 square foot. A hotel would be in that third lot, the fourth lot would be a sit-down restaurant. One thing I might stress is, you know, we like sit-down restaurants, and we ideally would love to guarantee that one would be part of this package, but since we aren't the sit-down restaurant operators, it'd be tough for us to commit to a sit-down restaurant would be part of this, but we definitely want to create a nesting for that sit-down restaurant so that we could get one as part of this development. Couple other drive-through restaurant spots, and then seven and eight would be, you know, your bigger retail areas, and we feel like having that visibility for those retail areas is pretty key to getting them pulled off the highway and those shoppers knowing that they would be close to, accessible to the businesses and things. So the current area is we're pretty much a green space, not much developed there, and we would like to see that enhanced, but it gives you an idea of what you would see from the interstate, from the highway. Then there's a couple of the different aerial views. This will be one coming down Bob Griffin Road, which, you know, I want to congratulate the city on getting in passing the current SIT that's there for Bob Griffin. Some of these businesses would be in that SIT, and they would help contribute to the SIT payoff there that you guys are just getting going on, so congratulations on that. Then we got, you know, the now versus the future type of thing. On the future one, that would be one, a view of point of coming down from the north and the south on I-35, you'll see the big box retailers first and then the restaurants. So why a TIP? The TIP does not take away the base. The base is always there. The TIP only pulls down incremental value. Public infrastructure is needed to make this project happen. You know, there's not accessibility to a lot of these lots. It needs to have roads and utilities, and then, and the other thing is developers on the hook, so, you know, the city's not really responsible for any of the debt service. We appreciate your support on this project, and the next steps are that we would need to get in front of the TIP commission. You guys have a TIP commission and we'd like your support to get in front of that and work out the details.
And there was your five. You did very well, Scott.
I'm at six. I got six.
Yeah, it was good. Yeah, it was going off, and I was like, you're almost there.
Is there any questions you guys might have that I can answer?
Do you think there's going to be any changes that MoDOT makes with on-ramp, soft ramps in that area?
I don't think so. I mean, I think.
It's pretty solid.
Especially with making the improvements that we're making to that intersection there with this SIT, I wouldn't think MoDOT would be interested in changing much there.
Well, that's what I thought, if that established, then there's less of setting for them. They wouldn't think that that was.
Well, and Scott, you might want to bring up your conversation with MoDOT about trading off some spots, about moving that commuter lot farther away, opening up that area in the front.
Yeah, we made a couple of different steps at that, and I think most recently, I think they showed some interest in moving that, and that could, you know, that commuter lot, can we make that part of this development in a spot to make it where it pulls it away from the main intersection there, gives you the ability to improve it, run a lot into something that could be, you know, better developed, and still have the commuter parking, but just move it back.
Too well, it's a commuter lot. That's a nasty lot, I mean, just to look at.
Yeah.
Welcome to Cameron.
Yeah, I think once this, your SIT improvements at that intersection, I think the interest to that commuter parking is going to be, it's kind of like a failed entrance. If somebody coming in, would want to be turning in there and attracting traffic into the intersection, so MoDOT's finally realizing this, that something needs to happen. So we're open to working with them, yes.
Where would they put it?
Well, it'd kind of be up to MoDOT, but we could incorporate.
You said you'd consider moving it back.
If you look at our site design there.
Yeah.
Yeah, you see where the hotel is and then the sit-down restaurant. Right across there, there's a small little area. I wouldn't say it would be kind of equal sized. I think the commuter parking is about a half acre right now, more or less, and that could fit right in there.
And it's not used, it's definitely full.
Yeah, but MoDOT likes it.
How do they like it?
Yeah, yeah.
Could they be committed to making it concrete?
I don't know.
No.
They're not going to put any money towards that.
No.
They would want $10 for that.
Exactly what would happen.
It's too bad that they won't do for us what we have to do for ourselves. In a commitment in a city like this.
What's your timeframe from one to eight? Best-case scenario, worst-case scenario?
I would say probably I would be comfortable with a four to five years of one to eight. And I mean, worst case would be, you know, probably that six. I mean, it just depends on, you know, negotiations between, you know, users, whether that big-box person could be. And those big boxes are pretty critical to developing and getting the sales tax dollars that are needed for this project.
So do you have, I know you said you don't have commitments from restaurants or what have you. Do you have any commitments from big-box as well? No?
No.
Okay, so, but you've worked with, oh, right, you've worked with bringing in restaurants. This isn't your first rodeo, so.
We were in the Hardee's business before. We had operated a lot of Hardee's restaurants. Currently operate hotels.
Right.
But it's just, I think, when it comes first, chicken or egg, I think you got to be able to have a design, a plan, and a commitment.
Sure.
And then I can go out and market this to different big-box retailers, be able to bring them in.
Hotel lines would it be more of a nicer brand than what?
Brands that we do have are Holiday Express, Fairfield's, we have some Comfort Ends, we have Spring Hill Suites, I have a Residence Inn, so I have different brands, but this location would be like a Fairfield or Holiday Express.
Be a hotel, not a hotel.
Yes.
Inside.
Yes, oh, yes, yes. All right, well, thank you for your time. I really appreciate it, and we hope to get things rolling and down the road with the TIP.
Will you drive home tonight?
Not bad.
Oh, you're going home tonight?
Two and a half.
Yeah, I was just there.
Isn't it beautiful?
Yeah.
Okay.
Great quilt shops there, apparently.
Oh, yeah.
No, Hannibal.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, my wife has to go to Hannibal twice a year, but Hamilton, yeah, she does do that.
Patricia Welder in Hannibal, yeah, she does the.
Yeah.
Very good.
Anybody else would like to talk to the council?
You say?
Thank you.
Garrett.
Not tonight.
All right, that takes us to the consent agenda. Is there anyone who wants to remove an item from the consent agenda to be on its own? If not, Shelley.
Item A, motion to approve the minutes of the October 20, 2025 City Hall Advisory Committee Meeting. Item B, motion to approve the minutes of the October 20, 2025 regular session.
I will entertain a motion to pass the consent agenda.
So moved.
Go ahead.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It passes? Four in favor, zero opposed. That takes us to appointments, Shelley.
We do have appointments early this year for the library board. These appointments will take effect in January. There are three park, or library board seats that are expiring. Jennifer Winkler, Juliana Arnt, and Michelle Roach. Juliana and Michelle have submitted the documents to reapply for their seats. I don't know if Jennifer termed out, they do have term limits on the library board, or she just, you know, was no longer interested in serving. There were three people who applied for that empty seat, those are important in your package, and at the last library board meeting, the library board recommended the reappointment of Ms. Arnt and Ms. Roach, and also appointing Ms. Brett Bavolka to the library board. And there's no objections, those will be on the next consent agenda board decision.
All right.
Also, we did receive one resume for the interim council seat. I did distribute that, you should have that in front of you from Ross Work. The date, the deadline for that in my advertisement is this coming Wednesday or Thursday. The apps are due on Thursday, so we'll still be taking them through Thursday. Actually, we'll probably get them after that.
Did you come and get one?
I don't think I did.
Oh, here.
Oh, yes, I did see it. I didn't know what that was.
She doesn't know how to read.
That's the only one I've received so far, and we are still thinking on application.
All right, very good. All right, that takes us to our city manager report.
Mayor Council, thank you. I spoke with Robbie today. He's installing the cabling at City Hall. It's the CAS 6 cable. He's done a pretty good job over there. He'll be done tomorrow with it, is what he told me. They've got everything ran to all the stations that had it previously, so that should be sealed up tomorrow afternoon. I talked with Tad, the fire suppression system should be installed sometime in the middle of November, and we're still in a holding pattern with PST on Phase 2 of City Hall. So at this point, nothing's being done over there, so we're in a holding pattern. Third Street Buildings, again, they've been given the green light by DNR, the 10-day waiting period of lapse. The demolition should begin any day. They do have, I talked to Jason today, they've got some folks up there that they're working on taking a roof off of that West Building, the old Vision Center building, and he did say that they will most likely be moving equipment in Friday.
They haven't even mobilized yet.
Right, so.
They're just waiting.
He said to kind of put a damper on it because we didn't want him to start due to March Fest and a couple other things, so they should be bringing equipment in Friday. The staff is still working on the MoDOT, the Bob Griffin and the Hare Street Projects, and the tie-in of the water line is in progress right now.
Yeah, I've heard that like 100 times. It's happened.
Yeah, I've heard that 100 times too. There's actually a hole in the ground.
There's a pipe somewhere.
Okay, that's the first time I heard it.
There's a hole in the ground.
It'll be finished tomorrow.
I've heard that 100 times.
I can show you pictures.
That's all I have.
I'll believe it when I drink it.
Any questions?
The cabling, you said everywhere that we had the lines before, is there any, anybody else that we should go ahead while we're in there? Should we just go ahead and get the rest of it?
Not at this one, no.
No, neither of the wiring?
They don't need it.
Whatever else?
Okay.
I just don't want to tear it down in 10 years and put in new cabling because we forgot.
It's all going back to where, to all the offices, everywhere.
To where it was needed.
Everywhere it was is where they're replacing.
Well, but I'm saying, is there anywhere else in addition to that? Has anybody ever thought, hey, it'd be good to have here and here as well? That's all I'm asking.
I think all the places where there could be desks or.
Yeah, there's new offices.
It's all.
We have a lot of jacks that we've never used before.
Okay.
In areas that we haven't used for that, so I think we're pretty good for expansion.
Okay, that's perfect.
And then in all of our workrooms, we had electronic equipment, so in all the workrooms have that access and multiple walls. You know, all the copy machines and printers were all integrated into the system, so.
Okay.
We got stuff.
Okay, I just don't want you guys, you know, having to deal with this in five hundred years. Should be good to go.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. That's it for me.
Any other questions? All right, that takes us to unfinished business. And now we'll go on to new business. Shelley, first reading. Bill 2025-34, an ordinance approving a service agreement between the Cameron Fire Protection District and the City of Cameron, Missouri to provide fire protection and emergency services outside the Cameron city limit. I will entertain a motion to pass Bill 2025-34 on first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Thank you. This is the annual service agreement between Cameron Rural Park Protection District and the City of Cameron. It's a yearly agreement for Chief Officer 26. It encompasses basically 144 square miles outside of the city limits of Cameron, providing fire services, fire emergency services total for that area. And again, to pay for that, the Rural Park District is a tax identity. They pay the City of Cameron 60% of their income to the City of Cameron right off the top. Forty percent of which they hold actually is money that they spend for the fire department, buying the equipment. In the end, the City of Cameron gets 100% of that money from the rural. So it's a good program for both entities, the rural and the city. It's given the fire department the opportunity to buy equipment over time that we would not have had the opportunity to have done because of the cost factors, so I agree. See, no, nothing changes, that's the same during the year, and other than the money it kind of goes up just a little bit every year. And it's a property tax, so the property taxes in the rural is actually on an incline every year, I don't know if we've seen it before.
Yeah, it's been a good partnership, to say the least.
Is there a reason, do we have like a legal reason that we have to do it yearly instead of just saying, hey, let's do a five-year plan or a 10-year plan so that just maybe, I'm just curious.
So some of it's going to be annual appropriation. The Cameron Fire Protection District is its own political subdivision, so some sort of five-year. But it would always have to be subject to annual appropriation. So I'm guessing that as part of this, just knowing the time of year that it comes up, that part of it is yearly just due to, okay, we've agreed, here's what it is, one year, now it's in our budget, now we appropriate it, where you could do a five-year one, but it would always be subject to them deciding not to annually appropriate the amount, so I think the one year is just cleaner from a just management perspective. It seems like extra paperwork, but luckily Mike has kind of gotten it figured out with them to the point where it's the same contract every year.
Okay.
Any other questions? All those in favor of passing Bill 2025-34, say aye. All opposed? Passes? Four in favor, zero opposed. That takes us to our first reading of Bill 2025-35, Shelley.
Bill 2025-35, an ordinance authorizing the mayor of the City of Cameron, Missouri to enter into a lease agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for ground surface for a welcome to Cameron sign.
I will entertain a motion to pass Bill 2025-35 on first reading.
So moved. Second.
Discussion.
This has previously been a five-year agreement with MoDOT, and it's for the welcome to Cameron marker at 36 and Mackelton.
What's the cost?
It doesn't cost anything.
Well, that's what I thought.
We just have to provide insurance, so every July when our insurance renews, we provide them a new certificate of insurance, so we have insurance on it. When I contacted them this time, the gentleman who's doing it now, who's different than I thought it was five years ago, said that a license was more appropriate than a lease, and a license is for 10 years, and so that we don't have to come back and do this again for 10 years. We're going to do a license.
Who are we insuring it against?
Against damage to MoDOT's ground, because it's MoDOT's ground.
I mean, that's what I thought.
Yeah, we're just.
How come it's only one of them? There's really two of those in town.
This is the only one on MoDOT ground. The other one's on private property.
Three. We're insuring the ground.
No one's always been questioning clarity on this legally. Yeah, and for this one, this one, there's less of this MoDOT property, and I'll agree
with Shelley, but the license does grant us a little bit greater authority and allows MoDOT a little bit more authority to let us do it. If you look specifically at like our right-of-way use agreements or our own franchise agreements, those are licenses. We are granting them a license to utilize the property for the purposes necessary, and then here, I would say that the insurance, well, a part of it is making sure that we don't damage MoDOT ground, and the sign is pretty significantly far away from active roadway. I would assume that in part, to answer the council's question a little bit, part of the insurance is just in case somebody lost control of their car, was driving and ended up in that area where our sign is, and they hit our sign, that we would be the ones that would end up involved with that potential litigation.
No landmark or career aspect.
Yeah.
Any other questions? All those in favor of passing Bill 2025-35, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That takes us to Resolution 2025-60, Shelley.
Resolution 2025-60, a resolution authorizing the City of Cameron, Missouri to enter into an agreement with BTC Bank for the investment of public funds to the Entrefy ICS and Speeders Program. And I have Michaela Smith and Kim Barcoling here, who are ready for discussion.
I will entertain a motion to pass Resolution 2025-60.
So moved.
Discussion.
I'm Michaela Smith. I'm the retail banking officer for BTC Bank, and I work out of our Bethany office, and this is Marissa Pendleton. Kim, actually.
MoDOT a little bit more authority to let us do it. If you look specifically at like our right-of-way use agreements or our own franchise agreements, those are licenses. We are granting them a license to utilize the property for the purposes necessary. And then here, I would say that the insurance, well, a part of it is making sure that we don't damage MoDOT ground, and the sign is pretty significantly far away from active roadway. I would assume that in part, Andrew, to answer my first question a little bit, part of the insurance is just in case somebody lost control of their car, was driving and ended up in that area where our sign is and they hit our sign, that we would be the ones that would end up involved with that potential litigation.
No landmark or career aspect.
Yeah.
Any other questions? All those in favor of passing bill 2025 dash 35, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? That takes us to resolution 2025 dash 60. Shelley.
Resolution 2025 dash 60, a resolution authorizing the City of Cameron, Missouri to enter into an agreement with BTC Bank for the investment of public funds to the Entrefy ICS and Sfeeder's program. And I have Michaela Smith and Kim Barcoling here who are ready for discussion.
I will entertain a motion to pass resolution 2025 dash 60.
Second.
Discussion.
I'm Michaela Smith. I'm the retail banking officer for BTC Bank, and I work out of our Bethany office. And this is Marissa Pendleton. Kim actually came up and visited with you previously. She's our market president here in Cameron over buildings and branches that we have here. And we are the depository institution for the City of Cameron. And we do have to cover everything. FDIC insurance, we'll use securities of the bank, or we'll use a federal home loan bank letter of credit, make sure that all of the city funds are in essence secure. And so we have been using the Entrefy network for several years now with other public funds that we work with. And we use those as a sweep account, so you always have access to your money every single day. It's just another opportunity for us to use this network to make sure that that FDIC insurance coverage is there for all of the deposits. And I apologize, the Entrefy network is a it's a network of hundreds of banks across the United States. So we place funds at the different banks under that FDIC limit. It's all organized and set out for you in a monthly statement, daily access, and just really does the same thing. And it works well for us at the bank. So we would like to be able to utilize that for your accounts. And in return, we'll get a little bit higher interest on the deposits, and we'll get even higher amount on the amount that's swept out. So the the higher amount that was in your note that we have there, that was in talking about the Sfeeder's amounts of the insured cash sweep, which is more of like a money market account that we we move the money back and forth and have that higher interest rate. If there is idle funds or funds that, you know, might be, we're not going to need this for 30 days, then we essentially put them into a CD account. And so the CDs, you know, our 90-day CD right now is at 3.99 for the annual percentage yield. So we can increase that where you're making 0.15 on your money right now with us. So definitely getting you a lot of interest in return in order to use this.
Yeah. Yeah, 4% on a CD, a 90-day CD. What are we using now? Because I know we're already working with that other, I can't think of the name of the company.
We're working with PFM.
Right.
We've been with them for approximately a year.
Right.
And we have a series of CDs. And it's a similar product. And they are laddered and roughly in the 4% market, too. There are some at 4.1. I've seen today there's one at 3.9. But that's a separate mechanism, and I I would like to keep that mechanism and also have this mechanism.
No, that's fine.
This this will be easier if easier for us to communicate or if we can walk next door versus typing on the internet.
So and also, this is the type of thing our our daily operating account. So instead of us having to manage and how much money of this can we put away, this is money that's going to be swept in and out of our operating, our daily operating fund. And so we're going to be earning higher interest on that and have access to it every day.
But the higher interest is only going to be 1%. The higher interest to 1% is if we have a lump sum.
The higher.
And at that point, the lump sum should be put over in something that's.
Well, I from what Michaela said on her recent is 3.99 for a 90-day.
Right.
So that's not doing the CD. Right, that's if we were to do a CD with them, which would be very comparable to the PFM accounts that we have.
Right. But we're saying we're just going to be using the sweep account, which is 1% instead of 0.15. Is it CIPIC or is it FDIC at that point?
That would be FDIC.
Okay.
And that would be the Entrefy program.
And then that's where we're separating out all of our monies to keep it under 250 so that we're guaranteed if something happens to a bank.
Correct.
Will be covered.
Correct. So actually, we'll be a little bit curious for the amount over back, but.
But they wouldn't wouldn't have to, right? If you're going to.
We would be able to, or perhaps not have to, purchase like the the letter of credit at the federal home loan bank, especially as we come upon tax season. So in November, December, when all the tax money starts rolling in.
Right.
Just managing that process is a little bit time-consuming on behalf of our finance department at the bank. And so the the sweep account just automatically moves that money over, and so it's always FDIC insured, and we're not missing anything if there's a large deposit that comes in, you know, from a from a tax payer.
And that's, so if if this large sum, whatever sum that is, this large sum comes in, it's over 250, you're going to send it out to the.
It's the Entrefy network.
Entrefy network. Sorry.
And the banks potentially can change every day that's part of that network. So they're all, you know, certified FDIC insured financial institutions. And so if we have, you know, if we put out $5 million there, we reciprocate and we receive that $5 million back. So that's kind of, I mean, that's what I like about this program. So the most of, and I think I think it's MoCap with like school districts, they they have those functions, but it's not necessarily reciprocating and keeping money in the community. There are really good interest rates, but it is, you know, a different type of program. Whereas this, the money is really always staying in the community.
And you're saying right now we're about 1% on the sweep account?
Correct. What we're what we're banking without doing this is 0.15% on our operating account.
Yeah.
Well, that's our operating account. That's what we have to have on candid and we're going to set our limit at about 500,000 because every month that's about what close to what our power purchases is. So that that makes sense to us to always keep it about that. Then they'll just have to pledge securities for the other 250.
Any other questions? All those in favor of passing resolution 2025 dash 60, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes or in favor and zero opposed. That takes us to resolution 2025 dash 61. Shelley.
Resolution 2025 dash 61, a resolution for the City of Cameron, Missouri to accept a proposal for a Bobcat compact excavator from Casey Bobcat.
I will entertain a motion to pass resolution 2025 dash 61.
Second.
Discussion.
Thank you, Mayor Council. So this is to purchase a new excavator for the electric department. We were not forbids on this. We got one of the bids on it. They're listed out there on your your letter. Casey Bobcat was the lowest bidder, about four to six week lead time on delivery. It's being replaced in our 2004 excavator. Getting up an hour and starting to cause a lot of maintenance issues. So this also will declare that old excavator a surplus to sell it off at cost.
Is this in the budget already?
Yes, we had 110,000.
Yeah, that's.
Did they ever trade in equipment?
Did they ever trade in equipment?
Typically, no. We can usually go to the two auction and get better prices. If it was newer, maybe a 20-year-old piece of equipment, you're probably better off to auction.
They rode hard.
All of our equipment just rode hard.
I just threw that out there. I didn't know you'd bite off.
Well, it's true.
It is true.
Have you ever noticed?
Yeah, you guys do a great job.
All of our equipment is like Dunski, you know, by the time. Hey, by hey, they all wired.
Yep. All right. Any questions? All right. All those in favor of passing resolution 2025 dash 61, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes or in favor, zero opposed. That takes us to our second public participation. Please come to the difference and sign your name. You have five minutes. We'd love to hear from you. All right. That takes us to miscellaneous comments from the staff.
I just want to give a shout out to all the city staff. I appreciate all the city staff and all the hard work that they're doing. Thank you, guys.
Look at there.
Nothing.
The electric department has been doing quite a few meter change outs. We're kind of getting to the early end of life on a lot of the electric meters that were put in about 10 years ago. So we've been replacing, I think we replaced 65 meters last week. So they're starting to die at a pretty good clip. Also, we're working on our fall tree trimming and still got several new construction projects that we're getting utilities fixed up. Water department, they've had still several more water main breaks. I'm sure you've seen, we have blow advisory out for over, we had a leak at between fifth and sixth on Mulberry over the weekend, and we also had one Friday out off I-35 out in Timber, an old rural water district line that we took ownership of years ago. So they've been busy fixing water leaks. All I've got. Oh, I will give you an update on the pipeline. As discussed, they got the 12-inch tie-in done. They've got the six-inch tie-in back to the nursing home done. All that's left is one more six-inch tie-in going to Enline Trace, which they've got dug out and the rig they've cut into tomorrow and then tie back to the 16-inch pipeline. So that should all be done by the end of the day tomorrow, hopefully, along with everything good as well. So all that'll be left at that point is for us to get our power run down through the vault and get the skater system installed on it. Hopefully, within a couple of weeks, that'll all be done and it'll be taking water.
Everything's disinfected?
We're waiting, they're waiting on one sample to come back from the water tower at Stewartville. And once they get the results from that, they'll be able to start pushing water to Maysville. We can get water now, just not at the rate we would need to be able to get it out because of pressure issues.
So they've been making sure that they've been fixing leaks is another thing that they've been doing right.
As far as I know, they have all the leaks fixed that I'm aware of.
Well, that they're aware of.
For now. Everything's been pressure tested now, and it's been disinfected and tested. So everything booked at Maysville and Cameron should be good to go. They just have to put the tower in service. The unit tower, you want to tell me anything about that?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. This is good. That's about that one.
The Mulberry Tower, we did have the police department, they're growing out there, blew up there, and it does appear to be an old patch that's failed or something to that effect. Utility Services, who is our, has our maintenance contract on all our water towers, is going to be here tomorrow morning to start repairing that. And they'll have to weld the patch inside, repaint and disinfect and refill the tower. So that'll probably be at least a week process there. Tower's been out of service since we found the leak. Doesn't cause any other issues around town. Were able to maintain with any tower, one tower out of service. So the tower was was repainted in the summer of 2004, and it has a annual inspection every other year. It's drained and inspected, and then the off year is an just official inspection. So it was inspected about three months ago. So this is just a thin spot that finally.
Well, I walked up there when I heard about it. Dan sent us a message. I went up at night, which is you don't do because I heard water running, and it was windy, and I walked underneath there. And I was on the sidewalk, all of a sudden, boom! I was totally saturated because it just flew over there.
Yeah, people were saying they need to get the cars washed.
Yeah. Well, there'll be people disappointed in town that it wasn't somebody shooting.
Oh, I know. That was so, yeah.
That was the excitement for the weekend.
I guess it's a common thing. I said that to somebody in my office, and they're from another town close to here. And they said that they get their shot a lot.
Yeah. Not a wise idea.
Why would anybody do that?
Yeah, not a wise.
There's a federal fence.
Yes.
Shooting a water tower.
I'm thinking Ira needs to get out there, get that water, and take it up here uptown, get our ice skating right back. I know you don't have anything to do.
No, no, I'm just.
I still want that ice skating. I don't like skating, but I still want to get that back up.
I used to live across from that park, and in the summer, it was a tadpole pond.
Oh, down there?
Yeah. That's at Beaver's Park.
And Missy.
Oh, you're talking about down there? No, I was talking about the one.
They used to have one at Beaver's Park.
Oh, they did?
It was a tadpole pond.
That must have been before I got that.
Was that where the baseball diamond is?
It's where the.
There was a little pond.
Oh, it is.
There was like a little tiny pond there. Is that what, is that what you're talking?
It just was a little like two-foot berm.
Yeah.
Square, yeah.
Yeah, I've heard that a couple of times. I didn't remember that now.
All right. Mr. Parks?
I want to work with, the park board is going to work with Mark and the water department guys, mostly probably just Mark because I know they're busy with water leaks. But we put a little money, bought some new tires for their compressor to start winterizing. Start with the pool probably this week, probably tomorrow, and then start on some of our other facilities, start getting those shut down for the winter. Also, the guys went out, started testing Christmas lights, and will probably start putting those up in the corporate park in the next week or two, get those put up. Other than that, the new scoreboards for Somerville ought to be here this week sometime to prevent getting installed. I hadn't heard anything out of the day, but I did hear something from them last Thursday, and it's supposed to be this week sometime. Other than that, that's really about all we're working on.
Did you have a park board meeting?
When did I have that? I think it was a couple of weeks ago, two weeks ago, something like that. We did not have enough for a court. And a few did not show up. We did have one member resign, Al Riggs, she resigned the very next, well, that Sunday or Monday, she sent an email in. We're down to seven, seven spots there. So we'll just keep moving forward.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Economic Development?
Right now, we are working on a brand new chapter in our zoning book, zoning ordinances for a C dash 1A downtown commercial district, which will run from Walnut Cherry. And that's going to be basically down that little run to make that a little different than the regular commercial area on the C1. And so I've written the ad, we're going to discuss it. Again, we threw it out there the last meeting, made comments, I re-upped it, rewrote it. And so we're working on that. And once we get that all together, we'll have it for you all for approval after they decide everything.
It's from Walnut, where?
Walnut and Cherry. Basically, that run that goes right there by the 200 block of Third Street.
Right by it, it's not the Third.
It includes it.
It includes the downtown area.
Just down Third Street.
Well, that's something, if you change that, you're going to have to ask all the business owners if they want to buy into that, if they want to be a part of it. You can't just do that like what we talked about before.
And public hearings and the whole nine yards.
Yeah.
Until we have something in hand, though, that we can say, hey, this is what we're looking at.
Are you going to be able to utilize those empty lots as part of this?
That's the whole idea.
That's good. I mean, the boot truck thing was maybe a viable idea. We've got them sitting around all over town, and it would reduce some foot traffic.
Well, and that's, that is something that we're looking at and how, you know, like the Iron District.
Yeah, I love that. Yeah, that's awesome.
Stuff like that. Right now, our zoning wouldn't allow that or anything like that. So we're trying to be more progressive to come up with different ideas. So we're trying to be more progressive to come up with different ideas like that.
And it's a far cry from being the Iron District and being something like the Iron District that looks really bad.
Yeah, that's, that's why it's fun writing it because let's limit it. So we're working on that, that's one thing we'll be discussing next Monday night. The Bob F. Griffin Road CID project, it should be at the Highway Commission tomorrow. And so then we'd officially be able to take the lowest most responsible bidder was and then we'll start signing the contract for that. And we got a meeting tomorrow morning at nine o'clock with the local politicians at MoDOT on the BB Bridge. Project for the TDD. We got five variances, lots of variances right now in planning and zone. We got five of them, we're going to get to discuss for a board of adjustments on Monday night. Still waiting on the report back on one twelve B Third Street, all want to do with that wall. Working with Patrick on selling the McIlwain property, I said it right? I never get that right. So I got that one right, plus we've been working with Mike and everybody on the TIPS, the CID, the TDDs and all the other acronyms that have to do with economic dwell. So that's what I got.
A lot of acronyms, no one knows.
A lot of them.
And variances, that's, that's really good news, that makes people are wanting to do things.
People are building.
Outside of the box.
Now, a lot of them, three of them are outside of the box.
Some places, that's still a really exciting thing.
That's it, well, that means that there is a, there is an actual house that got built there.
Yeah.
And so it's right outside the box, so. So, yeah, there's a lot of buildings going on, that's all I got.
Towards the end of last week, I had the street crew start bringing in the snow equipment, making sure everything's going to be ready to go. And once I had them start doing that, it would warm up, everybody's welcome.
Always.
We have found a few minor issues, but nothing major, we'll get some parts ordered, get them up and going. And we'll get the spreaders and everything calibrated and hopefully we're putting down the right amount of salt. Pretty much it, that's what we're working on right now, so.
I know in the past they've used beet juice.
We still do.
Okay, is it, is it less expensive than the salt or is it just because it's less damage?
The beet juice gets the, it keeps the salt working at lower temperatures. So our spreaders, our spreaders actually, we've got two nozzles or we have to do long spray bars. We can actually just put just nothing but liquid down or we have two sprayers that'll spray on the salt as it's coming out the truck to activate it. Plus, when we put the salt in the bin, we put beet juice on the salt.
It's healthier.
Don't smell the grease, but it works. That's all I've got.
All right.
They activated multi-factor authentication on our emails last week. The Care Serves project team is still working diligently on getting everyone up and running. There's extra steps that we have to go through to get the cell phones and everything in sync with each other. And so they've been a big asset and we could not have done this without their assistance. We have approximately sixty-plus active emails and various stages on different types of computer software languages. I'm glad we haven't done that, that's all I have. Sorry.
Chief, on the Mirma conference, we dealt mainly with the insurance and police departments. I know we're doing a lot of things right, there's a few things we probably changed to help that out, but we're on track, I think, with most of that. They're going to be providing regional training for a lot of, for all of their departments, they, in cities that they cover. I think we're going to post several of them out here in the center, which will be nice to have other agencies over here and utilize that. At the end of the year, they're trying to get everyone up to date on all the post hours and communication hours.
And do not shoot the water tower. Bad idea.
So I take everything on Friday night when everybody was out running around, coming home, I was coming home around seven. And the town was so busy with cars. I couldn't believe it, I was just hoping I wouldn't run into living people, but I think they were gone by then. Oh, yeah. Busy, busy. Mike, chief?
We host, our department hosted, I'm going to go over here to our station with the industry for a couple of hours. Same, just basically business as usual. We still do public education programs, which is really good for the educational, still have calls. Just daily stuff, there's just something about that.
Okay, okay. Oh, please.
I just wanted to introduce you guys to the new operator for the Genwick Pipeline back in the back there, Paul Reinhardt.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Been introduced.
He looks familiar.
I figured his capacity was that.
He's now working for Alliance, doing all the operations, making this up on the pipeline. You got questions, you can call him then.
And I have one more thing as well, I did get a phone call over the weekend about hunting at the reservoir.
Oh, really?
And so we need to reiterate that there is no hunting at the reservoir.
I did have a conservation agent tell me he did not understand why.
I had that same conservation agent yell at me about that.
Sure, yeah, this guy doesn't usually yell.
Oh, he yelled. Oh, yeah, these guys got to hear it.
We got, we had to get a supervisor involved.
Were you hunting at the reservoir when that happened?
No, but he didn't like when I said playing real catboy to him out there. Yeah, it was all about him hunting.
Is it because of public land, you think we should let anybody go public?
Yeah, because he and his son was there. And I was going to make his son cry. And I said, well.
That's not the guy.
Purchase, purchase of property then. This, this goes back to safety for the residents that are walking out there here.
We can't have random up in the tree stand up there.
And there's some that live out there too.
I know that the residents around the reservoir should thank me about, and I'm like, it wasn't me, it was, we started looking at all the rules and none of them made sense because they were all just out there. So now everything is the same way. Consistency is a wonderful thing.
Terry and I went to the Lawgarden's annual meeting last week and I do have a little bit of a recap for that. Lawgarden was recreated just over fifty-eight years ago for county, local and special action districts as a retirement plan. They have thirty-one thousand active benefit recipients right now, retirees receiving monthly payouts. They have eighty-one thousand members, they have eleven point four billion in assets. The program is ninety-two point three percent funded. Of that, seventy-two percent of that comes from investment, twenty-six percent comes from employer contributions and two percent comes from member contributions for those agencies that have their members contribute. Last year, they paid out five hundred and ninety-six million in benefits. And of that, they estimate approximately four hundred and ninety-five million of that got reinvested in their local community. I will be gone next, this coming Friday for a Mirma board meeting. And tomorrow is voting day, however, Clint County does not have anything on the ballot, so there will not be any voting here. CAD County does have one issue on the ballot, so there will be voting at the.
All right, very good, thank you. That brings us to our city council comments.
So I had a question about PSD and the engineering reports. When is it, we have it down on our minutes that November seventeenth, we're going to be discussing the engineering that they've come up with. Is, are we going to have something in hand?
It was communicated to PSD that the city expects to receive the services as noted in the original agreement approved by the city council, regardless of what is ongoing and what has been approved in the past, not by the city council. So yes, would be the answer.
So we will have them in hand for the seventeenth meeting?
We should, and if we do not, we're in breach if they don't, right? That would be a possibility.
And are we prepared for that contingency if that happens?
Yep.
Because this has dragged on so long, months and months of sitting, we've already paid for it, we're sitting here waiting for this to happen and we need to get started on this building.
City staff has actively prepared for most of all contingencies that they could.
Okay, so, so we're confident that November seventeenth, we'll be able to discuss the building, the engineering. When does, when can that be that we could start on rebuilding that?
You have to bid it out?
Yeah.
You gotta have a plan to bid, usually three weeks.
Three weeks to get a.
Usually put out the bid for three weeks.
For three weeks, so then, and that will, they will tell us what we need to bid, PSD will. And we'll have to decide on the roof what we're going to do with that.
And that's on the seventeenth as well?
Yeah.
With the committee, we're going to have that up, committee meeting at the next meeting with the advisory.
So even so, the seventeenth is six weeks away or this keeps getting kicked down the road so long.
It's two weeks.
Two weeks.
Oh, it's November, yeah, sorry.
Yeah, but you're right, and then you've got Thanksgiving and then Christmas and New Year, so you're going to push it at least until January.
I, I really despise things like that, that, you know, it's like, we don't forcefully keep moving on that project, so. Okay, thank you for that report.
We're, we're moving forcefully forward, they're not cooperating with us.
No, I know, I know, and that's, and that's what, that's what really irritates me is, is I'm always ready to play hardball. If somebody breaches their contract, but they're not doing what they're, when I immediately go to that next step and just get this over with. Because, you know, we're, we're not involved here. We've done everything that we're supposed to do.
Another thing you need to consider is that we're going into winter here and we have a building that has zero insulation in it.
Yeah.
We have to keep it heated and have to keep everything pretty.
Yeah, and we can start by putting in some walls and insulation and doing some things. If that means I have to go to a family reunion with them to get them to agree on something. They're all tied together. Okay, so around town, who's responsible for the trees that are in the right of way, the area between the sidewalks and the road? Okay, so this is a Spencer project then, and he's not here, but there's a lot of trees, a lot of dead trees that have been dead for years that, that's surely a code issue. There's one right by the police department, you go just south, just a hundred yards. There's one great big tree that hangs over the road and, you know, it's just time before those fall down and branches fall off. And, and there's kids that walk up and down those sidewalks and streets and there's a bunch of them on Fourth Street too. There's a row of, they're probably all those old ash trees or something. But is that something that Spencer needs to notify the property owners?
Maybe I'm working on them a lot.
Do we need to put a match to them like Mark said? What's it take to get them to, you know, because that, that's a one phone call project, I always say, right, Jerry? One phone call project. And, and they call Bob Dorton and say, hey, a tree in front of my house, let's cut that out. And, and it's done. So this isn't something that needs a lot of debate or conversation, it's just, they need to be told to do it now, now it's expensive. But somebody has to, and when it involves the city streets, then that's a special preparation there to get that block while they do fall the tree and get it cut up into firewood. Okay, so Spencer has been working on that, notifying those people, okay. Okay, and we got notice of the water main breaks and the water department did a fantastic job. I mean, just getting them all repaired so fast. The water tower was a big hype and many people are disappointed it wasn't gunfire, random gunfire. Spencer's done a really good job too with, with cleaning up properties. Because if you drive around town, you'll see these properties, they're just ground over and at least they're all bushwhacked down to where it's not as big as a fire problem or something. So he's done a good job there, that's all I have, thank you, you guys, you guys and gals, you're doing a great job, appreciate it.
Well, I was looking forward to Lance or Ted going up on that water tower with the fuel trunks and stuff taped and diving into that thing.
Everybody kept saying that, that tape can make a boat out of it.
Flex tape.
Yeah.
That's out of the question.
What'd you say?
I say you think the drone involved me?
I got some swimsuits, I got some swimsuits. Two piece for one thing.
I really don't have a lot, I just want to go back six months ago, nine months ago, a year ago and just think about the communication that I was getting from you all and from the city manager. And I want to say thank you because I've gotten more communications than I've gotten, well, in the, in the short time you've been doing this, than the entire time when I was back here with when Steve was on. So I've also seen more smiles, we won't get into that, that could just be they're nipping on something, but I don't know about that. But anyway, so I just wanted to say thank you. And then Carmen never gets thanked, but I always appreciate you for the finance stuff, you know that.
Carmen got a cake the other day.
Oh, wait a minute now, I didn't know that.
So, yeah, I don't know if, if things were rather stressed or what, but I, my second, my little daughter, she got married about three weeks ago. So the month of the Tuesday after I came back to work, the staff had decided they started a new program, a quarterly employee program that needed recognition and appreciation. So I walked, Dan was peeking around the corner of the building, trying to make sure everybody was in place. And they had a cake, I believe it was made by Don Harrison. It did not go to waste. Everybody, I think, enjoyed the cake, I, I know I did, but that was very nice, very appreciative of the staff to give it to us.
Yeah, that was nice, I did not know about that, congrats.
So now I think, so that was in October, so probably the next event would probably be in January.
So now you have to make the next dig.
I can make a pretty big.
Thank you.
Yeah.
You might have to.
So we'll do something, yeah. I am.
If you need a test.
That's the program now, it was nice.
Well, that's awesome. Anyway, just, I know that we don't get to say a whole lot other than during budget time with you, so I appreciate it. That is it for me.
Well, thank you for coming, I don't really have anything. And I will entertain a motion to exit and enter into a second meeting. For any client communications and personnel. John Breckenridge. John Tiger.
Yes.
Mark Carr.
Yes.
Becky Curtis.
We'll not have refreshments that time.